Andrew Lewis, Chair of the Committee. Council President Juarez let me know that she-
Recording in progress.
Oh, so now I should just restart then? Sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. Clerk. The June 15th, 2022 meeting of the Seattle City Council's Public Assets and Homelessness Committee will come to order. It is 2:04 PM. I'm Andrew Lewis, Chair of the Committee. Council President Juarez informed me she would be absent and is excused from today's committee. Will the committee clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Morales. Vice Chair Muscata.
Present.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Chair, there are four members present with one excused.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Just briefly going to give an overview of the agenda items for today. We are going to be hearing a couple of pieces of legislation that will be in front of us. The first item of business is going to be a bill from Seattle Parks and Recreation, authorizing a concession agreement with Compass Group USA for doing business in the canteen of Seattle Parks and Recreation. We are also going to be hearing another piece of legislation from the Parks Department regarding an agreement with Seattle Preparatory School to replace the Mott Lake Playfield and continue the ongoing relationship with the Mott Lake community and Seattle Prep on the use of that field. And then finally, we are going to be hearing a presentation from the Parks Department on the Cycle One accomplishments for the Metropolitan Park District. Although we are not convened today as the Metropolitan Park District, we are convened as the Committee, the Public Assets and Homelessness Committee. I did extend an invitation for the record at council briefing this week to all council members to attend this meeting. So if folks want to join for that agenda item, and I expect additional council colleagues may attend for that agenda item, that would be the reason to overview that critical Metropolitan Park District as we take that business up later this summer and into the fall. So looking forward to that. It will be a Parks-heavy day. So with that overview, we will move on to public comment. And the public comment period, I believe now, has a video that precedes it. Are we going to be playing that, Mr. Clerk? No, okay, I'll just give the- yeah. Yeah, I've been on a couple committees now where there's this pre-recorded video, but I'm happy to just do the typical prelude to it. The public comment period is going to be 20 minutes. Each speaker is going to be given one minute to speak. There will be public comment online and in person, and I believe we do have some in-person public commenters. Do we have online, folks, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, we have one public commenter, David Haynes, but he is not listed as present. Mr. Haynes, if you could please call in now. We're almost ready for public comment.
All right. Why don't we start with the in-person public speakers? And Mr. Clerk, you can start that process for the in-person list, provided it is fewer than five speakers.
Our first public commenter is Marguerite Richard, followed by Alex Zimmerman.
They don't take our time away from us. And I heard somebody say that we pay your taxes, and we don't come up in here for this. So I don't know what's so important today that you would even say that you want one minute from us. What is this? And then someone said that our faces should be on the screen, just like all other times, unless you're saying the pandemic got all up in the system and the mechanism of things, right?
Ms. Richard, are you speaking to an item on the agenda?
That you're the item on the agenda. Isn't your name on here? No, tell me right here. Doesn't it say Andrew Lewis, the Chair?
That is a tenuous definition of the agenda.
In one minute. That's my constitutional right, okay? And if you want to take it from me, you come right down here and do it. Come, come on, come on.
You have five more seconds, Ms. Richard.
I don't care what I have. You heard what I said, didn't you?
Alex Zimmerman, you are second public commenter.
I'm crying. Yeah, open, 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 yeah. I am crying. I'm very crying. You don't show my face. You don't show my sign. You don't show my hello, David Starr. Who are you, a Nazi? Why white people like you not respect me and Pearl? Because she's black and I'm Jew? Why you sit this Nazi fascist Gestapo psychopath? Why white people not respect minority like Pearl or me, Alex Zimmerman? What is going on? Who is freaking psychopath who give one minute?
Ms. Zimmerman, are you speaking to an item on the agenda?
Nothing, nobody here. Sorry. Yeah, I speak about agenda number, number one, yes, about Seattle Park Recreation. Who's this idiot who close park to people? Who did this? He did this? He's a clown. It's a third clown in row, what has we have? Thank you very much. Can you give me another minute? There's no people here.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman.
Mr. Haynes is present. Mr. Haynes, if you unmute your mic, you will have one minute to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can begin when ready.
Thank you. David Haynes, District Seven. Is City Council giving a monopolized service contract to the Compass Group? Is it the same company that has a United Kingdom-based parent company with a North Carolina-based subsidiary that's worth $20 billion? Are they going to be monopolizing the food and the beverage that's being allowed to be purchased throughout the entire Seattle Park system? And if so, what about competition? That doesn't seem right. And secondly, in a separate concerning issue about local realities, is the City Council could correct a bad policy, a wrong that they committed when they redirected, I believe, somewhere around $120 million of American Rescue Plan dollars away from solving the homeless crisis for all of these suffering people who have no- they don't have any proper 21st century shelter to go to. And City Council used that money to pay off newly created nonprofits from protesters. That's treasonous. That's unconstitutional.
Appreciate you calling in. We will now close the public comment period and move on to the first item on our agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please read item one into the record?
Item one, Council Bill 120341, An Ordinance Relating to Seattle Parks and Recreation, Authorizing the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation to Execute For On Behalf of the City A Concession Agreement With Compass Group USA Incorporated Doing Business As Canteen to Provide Food and Beverage Vending Machine Service in City Park Facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We are joined virtually by our presenters, and they can introduce themselves. I believe that we have the panel moderated by Superintendent Williams. Is that the case?
Yes. Yep. Great. We have Terry Burns from our contract staff here with us today, who will make the bulk of the presentation today. But I can get us started here. First, thank you for the opportunity to describe the concession agreement. We want to provide a few points of background before I hand it over to Terry. Seattle Parks and Recreation piloted a healthy food vending machine initiative back in 2011. That served as a model for other city departments. Our goal is to provide healthy food as part of our mission. And we look to do this in our vending machines. It's part of our healthy people, healthy environment, strong communities motto for the department. You know, and particularly when you think about how many young people go to a community center, we want to expose them to healthy food choices at our vending machines. We have over 35 facilities with vending machines. The machines are located in community centers, teen centers, lifelong learning centers, childcare rental facilities, and our park administration buildings. Basically, wherever people show up, we've got some vending machines. The vending machines are selling healthy snacks and provide it to benefit park users versus commercializing the system. So this is a direct benefit to people who use the park versus, you know, commercial activity that has no relationship to park users. We conducted a request for a proposal process prior to selecting the new long-term vendor. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Terry Burns on our team.
Thank you, Christopher. And thank you to the council for us having us here today. My name is Terry Burns. I'm the Parks Concession Coordinator for Seattle Parks and Recreation, and I have the she/her/hers pronouns. The ordinance that SPR is presenting to you today is a long-term concession agreement with Compass Group USA, who is doing business as canteen to provide food and beverage vending machine services to SPR indoor facilities. Next slide, please. Thank you. As Christopher said, SPR has 35 facilities that have vending machine services. The machines are in a variety of our different locations, community centers, teen centers, childcare rental facilities, and our administrative buildings. Next slide, please. So I'd like to give you a little history. Canteen has provided SPR with a reliable vending service since 2011. Canteen agreement with SPR expired in January of 2022. And to ensure that the business community was aware of the opportunity, SPR conducted an RFP process in the fall of 2021. To market the RFP process, the RFP was posted in the Daily Journal of Commerce, Two Decebes, Backs, Seattle Chinese Times, and The Scanner. Additionally, it was posted on the Seattle Parks and Recreation website and social media sites. In addition, the invite was sent to 77 businesses who provided vending services or supported local business companies. These companies were identified from the following resources: vending businesses who had registered on the city online business registry, companies that had previously inquired with Seattle Parks and Recreation to provide vending machine services, as well as vending machine companies that were found online. As an additional way to ensure that the business community was aware of the opportunity, a copy of the RFP posting was sent to Office of Economic Development, Ventures Nonprofit, and Washington State Food Trucks. From this RFP posting, Seattle Parks and Recreation received two proposals which met the minimum qualifications, Swire Coke and Canteen. Both proposals were reviewed by a diverse panel. The panel consisted of SPR employees and a community center user. The panels recommended Canteen based on the variety of healthy products offered, financial terms, and the bids that met SPR vending needs. Currently, SPR entered into a one-year agreement with Canteen to ensure that SPR guests and staff had continued vending service while our staff prepared this long-term agreement and legislated it through City Council. Next slide, please. Seattle Parks and Recreation is asking that we go in to be able to enter into a five-year concession agreement with an option to extend for an additional five-year terms with Canteen. The commission and revenue that we expect to receive from Canteen with- for SPR is the percentage of the gross sale, 25% of beverages and 28% of foods, with an annual minimum revenue of $25,000 for all vending machines that serve the public. For the SPR administrative vending machines, Canteen is required to set up a separate agreement with Canteen to pay commission payments to Washington State Department of Services for the blind. I'd like to go over a few highlights of the agreement. This agreement with Canteen is that they must stock only the machines with items that are considered healthiest or healthier on King County Healthy Vending Guidelines. This requirement in the agreement exceeds the Ordinance 124128 requirement that the vending machines on city properties stock a minimum of 50% healthier and healthiest food and beverage items. Another item that we'd like to highlight is Canteen will refund the customers directly to improve customer service as well as to remove Seattle Parks and Recreation from the cash handling requirements in the refund process. And lastly, is all machines must be ADA compliant, energy efficient, and be able to take multiple payment types to be able to serve our customers well. Next slide, please. And at this time, I would also like to let people know that Joe Lucera is from Canteen, who's the general district manager, is also online to help us answer any customer company-related questions. We will open it up for questions or any concerns at this time.
Thank you for that overview, Terry. Colleagues, are there any questions about this concessions contract? Okay, I don't see any. I do just want to say that I appreciate the overview and the slide deck of the process and the outreach for the RFP, where in addition to advertising it, the distribution to several vendors proactively and the process that narrowed it down to two vendors for full consideration that bidded and the diligence here in reporting the criteria that were instructive for the department in making this ultimate decision. I don't have any additional questions for this. It doesn't look like my colleagues have those questions either. So if that is the case, I am fine with moving this item forward. So is- Is there any objection from the members of the committee to taking- Oh, Councilmember Muscata, I'm sorry. You have your hand up. My apologies.
No objection, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to get in the queue to make some comments after you get a second. Thanks so much. So, Mr. Chair, why don't I go ahead and second your motion, if you want to put it in front of us?
Yes, I move Council Bill 120341. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, the floor is now open for comments on the bill that is in front of the committee. Councilmember Muscata, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to just express my support for this legislation today and really to thank Sage Alperick, Chief of Staff in my office as well, for reaching out to Teamsters 117 to get their feedback on the legislation. I'm really happy to hear that the company has a good track record of good union contracts with the Teamsters and that the Teamsters are supportive of this concession agreement as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to go ahead and vote on this and be in support of the legislation. Want to thank the departments and the Teamsters for their work and for the feedback.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Muscata. Are there any other comments on the bill that is in front of committee? Seeing no additional comments, will the clerk please call the roll on passage of the bill?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata.
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Chair, there are four in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The bill will go forward to full council with a due-pass recommendation of four votes in favor. Mr. Clerk, will you please read item two into our agenda?
Item two, Council Bill 120342, An Ordinance Authorizing Seattle Parks and Recreation to Enter Into An Agreement With Seattle Preparatory School to Replace The Mott Lake Playfield and Continue An Ongoing Relationship With The Mott Lake Community, Consistent With The Non-Government Agreement and Attachment One To This Ordinance.
Thank you. And we are joined again by a panel from Parks led by Superintendent Williams. We also have Sam Reed with us from Seattle Prep. So why don't I hand it over to you first, Superintendent Williams, to introduce the panel and the other members who are here to present to the committee?
Great. Sure, I'm Christopher Williams, Acting Superintendent, Seattle Parks. And we've got Christopher Powell from our park staff here, who has worked on this contract. And then we have some guests from Seattle Prep. Sam Reed is here. Is there anyone else, Sam, from Prep?
Yeah, we have a few others joining us today. We have our school president, George Hoffbauer, with us today, as well as one of our head coaches, Sam Bennett, and one of our student athletes that has used the field as well.
Great. Awesome. Well, maybe I will make some introductory remarks and turn this over to the capable Christopher Powell here on our team. Thank you for providing opportunity to come here today to make this presentation. We also want to start out by thanking our partners at Seattle Prep. This turned out to be maybe a longer-than-anticipated process to get through the development of the legislation and negotiations on this. So we really want to give a hats off to our partners at Prep, who were patient with us as we did our due diligence on this. So this is kind of a repeat. Seattle Prep did this back in 2011 at their own expense, and we're approaching this contract with similar terms and conditions. The agreement adds a public benefit requirement, which you'll hear about later. Seattle Prep will be able to continue to use the playfield during the times and dates outlined in the new agreement. The terms of the agreement are consistent with existing SPR policies that allow the department to establish scheduling priorities to particular sites in return for major facility improvements or other considerations that benefit the public. It's important to note here that Seattle Prep is paying for a synthetic turf rug, and they will also be paying for the opportunity to use the field. So, you know, it's kind of a good deal for the city here and taxpayers. This field is an example of one of the fields in our inventory that's probably in less demand. It's not big enough for a regulation soccer field. On one side of the field, there's probably 40 feet of peat bog. This is in a part of, rather adjacent to a part of Lake Washington, which has become utrophic, which means that it's got a peat bog and the field is actually sinking. Mott Lake does not have lights at this location. However, we're able to schedule the field year-round, limited to seasonal daytime hours. The fill schedule at Mott Lake will be available from 8:30 AM to sunset, seven days a week. Seattle Prep School will use less than half of the hours reserved at the field. So that is also a big benefit to the community. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Christopher Powell on our team to talk about the details of the agreement.
Thank you for that, Christopher, and thank you to the council for hearing this. So we're talking about the Mott Lake Playfield, which is right now a synthetic field located at 1618 East Calhoun Street. It's near the Mott Lake Community Center. And as Christopher said, one thing to note about this site is it is very close to the water, and because of that, nature isn't quite on our side at this site. So there is a peat bog in that northeast corner that is actively moving in on the park incrementally. So the main sports that are scheduled at Mott Lake Playfield would be lacrosse, football, ultimate frisbee, and field hockey. And for those sports, typically in a calendar year, we'll schedule about 1,300 hours of use at the park. Of that, Seattle Prep is our primary user there. They only use about 38%, which means the 62% of field time left to us is what we're able to use for the community. And with this site being a formerly grass field in the past, pre-2011, before the previous agreement, we were only able to schedule this field about five months per year, which is less than our other grass sites. And that is because of the nature of that wetland there and the peat bog that limits our usage. With the synthetic going in there, we are able to reserve this field every day of the year, seven days a week, which significantly increases our usage and also lets the community get on that site a lot more for drop-in use as well as use sports. So, pre-2011, Mott Lake Playfield, as I said, was a grass site and often muddy. But with this agreement between Seattle Parks and Seattle Prep, a turf was donated by the University of Washington to Seattle Prep to be installed at the Mott Lake Playfield. That's where the original agreement came from, as far as getting this field in place. And that is the current turf that we have down at Mott Lake. It's still the University of Washington field. At this point, that field is over 10-plus years old, which in the life of a synthetic field typically means it needs to be renovated. But coming to us, it was also used by them before that. So this field is now worn down and definitely needs to be replaced. Some of the key terms here is this, again, is an extension of an agreement we already have with Seattle Prep, something that's been in place for the past 10 years. And for this project, Seattle Prep will be paying for all of the planning, design, and construction of the new synthetic turf, which is, again, worn out and needs to be replaced. And Seattle Prep will also be paying field use fees for all of their usage, which we will touch on in subsequent slides, as well as this agreement. And it adds a public benefit component that the previous agreement did not have, and we will go over that more later slides as well. So some of the conditions here, this would be a 12-year agreement with an option to extend that an additional 12 years, seeing where we are at that point. Again, Seattle Prep is paying for the field and paying for all the costs related to construction. Once the field is installed and everything is ready to go and opened up, the city would be responsible for the maintenance as we would own the site as well. And then we would operate all of the field scheduling and getting both the community and Seattle Prep scheduled on that site. So what Seattle Prep gets out of this, besides the synthetic field, is they get priority usage for what equates to our spring and fall seasons. That's March 1st through June 15th, and then again, August 10th through November 30th. And they get that field Monday through Friday, 3:00 to 5:30 PM. And at this site, this is where Seattle Prep does almost half of all of its reservations with the city, as far as their sports. They do both lacrosse and football at the sites. They are limited to four junior varsity games and four freshman games. Again, this site is only used for lacrosse and football for them, as it's not big enough for a full regulation soccer field. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Sam Reed to go over the public benefits.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, council, for hearing this today. As Mr. Williams at the beginning, it's something that is multiple years in the making. And so it's a big day for us to be in front of you today and hopefully to provide a new field and new space for not only our students and student athletes, but the community as well. One of the things we're most excited about in this kind of renovated, updated agreement is the public benefit that goes beyond the donation of the turf and the continuation of our fees. It includes work that we've already been doing to some point, but now formalizing it and kind of holding all of us accountable to it. One of the things that fits in our mission is to be active in the community, partnering with organizations- Um, partnering with uh organizations, um, youth, um. In low income and marginalized neighborhoods and being able to expose them to opportunities that might not have been available to them otherwise. Um, one of those uh prime examples, um, and I'll and I'll. And pass it over in a second is um some of the work that we've done with middle school age children. Exposing them to the sport of lacrosse. Um, lacrosse, one has been traditionally a very uh. Expensive sport, um, that is not very available to all uh all people within the community. Um, through some of our work with uh schools in the South End specifically and some of the work with Coach Bennett, who is on the call with us today. We've been able to expose uh students and and youth to the sport of lacrosse, um, through some of the camps that we've done. We've also worked and will look to continue working with Mont Lake Community Center. Um, allowing our students at Seattle Prep um to serve and work with uh community youth in terms of tutoring, in terms of um. On-field activities, uh recreational play and non-sport-specific activities as well. One of the benefits of the the. One of the benefits of the COVID opera the times for us is it forced us to think outside of the box and do different work. Um, one of the things that we uh really found important with our students um was. Non-sport-specific training and and exercise and so um some of that uh free play work, some of that uh strength and conditioning. Speed and agility, all of that. Um, we're looking to build programming that would allow us to bring in. Kids from around the city to free opportunities with our coaches and and on this field at Mont Lake Playfield. Um, but I think one of the, one of the benefits is to see the work in actuality. Um, and I I'd like to at this time kind of pass it over to to Sam Bennett, who is our head lacrosse coach. He's also a teacher at our school. And with him is one of our um student athletes that's kind of benefited from this programming in the past, um Nat.
Uh, thanks, Sam. Um, so over the past um three winters, we've been able to run. Um, lacrosse clinics working with, I I used to teach at a school called Seattle Nativity School. Um, a school uh that exclusively serves low-income youth um as a free tuition school. Um, so we were able to utilize uh Seattle Prep's resources to put on camps. Um, over the winter and fall um to expose kids from Seattle Nativity. Um, as well as then it expanded to to other Catholic middle schools, um, as well as other local middle schools and high schools. Um, to expose them to lacrosse training um in partnership with some coaches from Bishop Blanchett. Um, it was great to be able to utilize the Mont Lake space um this fall um as an easy-to-get-to location. Um, that was available to us in the winter. Um, Nat was able to coach with us at a number of these camps. Um, we were able to have kind of each year somewhere between ten and twenty kids consistently coming to camps that lasted. Um, eight weeks um for about an hour and a half of programming um on Saturday mornings during that kind of nine to twelve slot. Um, that Seattle Prep uses um at Mont Lake. Um, so it was a cool opportunity um for us to expose lacrosse um. To people who otherwise wouldn't have been exposed to it. Um, and we're just starting to see. Um, students come through that program who spent time playing at youth lacrosse programs um with the Seattle Wolfpack. Um, play a couple of years at the Wolfpack and now a number of them are matriculating into into different high schools with the opportunity. To come into high school as experienced lacrosse players. Um, with that partnership, we worked with the Wolfpack to ensure that students have access to. Um, gear. Um, throughout that time, lacrosse can be a really expensive sport. Um, so um, there's been a lot of work done. Um, to ensure that there's funding um for lacrosse gear for players who are interested a- and to pay their rec fees as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Sam. Um, yeah, I think that's uh hopefully that gives a high-level overview of sort of the additional public benefits. Um, and as we move through the twelve years of this agreement, hope to uh continue to expand um. What we're able to do in the community, um specifically at the Mont Lake Playfield site.
Sam, thank you so much and uh thank you also to the Parks Department for that really helpful overview. Uh, council colleagues, are there any questions for the panel? Councilmember Morales.
You, uh, you mentioned if that you work with or connect with uh middle schools. Can you tell me? Uh, some of the schools and how that connection happens? What does that mean?
Yeah, specifically, um, most of our camp offerings are just open to. Um, area youth within that middle school range. Um, there are some rules and regulations in my world and my life regarding about. Um, what sort of formal partnerships we're able to do with the public schools. Um, we we've done work specifically with some of the. Private um Catholic schools in our area, but most of our camps, um, such as the one that Coach Bennett. Um, was recommending or talking about there is open to um the Nativity School population as well as any other. Um, you know, area middle school aged students, so it's more that age range than with a school in specific.
So I'm sorry, so you are not allowed to work with public schools, but other kids can come if they are middle school age?
So the WIA, our athletic organization, the private schools would have some rules around formal partnerships with public middle schools. Um, we can offer programming to students within that age range, um, but not a formal partnership with a specific school.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is if the the public benefit that we're getting in exchange for this. Is in part that you are working with students from presumably outside the Mont Lake community. How are you making connections to students of middle school age? Who are not part of that community?
So that's a good question. Um, a a lot of it is um through some of our, I mean, the 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 name brand of of our athletic program. The work that we've done at the high school level, the exposure, the the programs that we want, but specifically. Um, Coach Bennett's um relationships with our youth organizations. He mentioned the Seattle Wolfpack there. His prior work with the Nativity School, um, connections that we've built over time, um, and making those opportunities available. Um, next week, for example, or um, we've got youth football camps on that on that field. Um, not necessarily part of the public benefit per se, um, but those are available for anyone in the community to sign up for.
So can I, can I have, I have a few questions, Chair, if that's okay?
Uh, perfectly fine. Thank you, Councilmember Morales.
Can you talk a little bit about the the fifty hours of public service hours? What what does that look like and how is that um? Determined?
Um. Chris Powell could jump in here as well. Traditionally, what we've done is we've, um, I think there's a date within the agreement that we are, we present the request for the use. Um, by a certain time of when we will put those public hours in place and so. Um, we would request the the use of Mont Lake Playfield um within that fifty-hour. Um, allotment uh for that eight-week lacrosse camp, for example, and so that. Eight weeks um of, you know, an hour and a half of lacrosse play each of those Saturday mornings. Would effectively tally through that fifty-hour public benefit.
That that's correct and from the park side, there would be. An annual report provided to us so that we can see what program Seattle Prep plans to run to fill those fifty hours. Um, for the upcoming year.
I would, I would also jump in here and say whenever we work with a partner who is offering a public benefit. We like to advertise those public benefits on our website.
I appreciate that. I guess I'm just, I mean, that's less than an hour a week. Uh, for s- for sports programming or camp programming, so I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what the benefit is. Um, and I think really mi- my, maybe these are really questions for, uh, I don't know if this is for parks or for central staff, but. Um, I'd be interested to know, and we can follow up later, um, how many agreements we have. That are set up in this way, um, that offer reserved access to the fields in exchange for investment. Um, I'd also be interested to know what analysis has been done on fields across the city to assess local neighborhood access versus. Um, you know, this prioritized access and I'm asking this because I I'm sure I've said this in in this committee before. Um, but down here in the South End, um, you know, we have a lot of. Low-income students, we have uh children who don't have uh great access to some parks. I'm thinking particularly of Georgetown. Um, who who don't get access to their neighborhood park. Because we have private schools that have reserved use during after-school hours and Saturday morning hours. Um, and so I I will say I'm a little concerned about um. The extent to which this is a normal practice, uh, and in our par- public parks across the city. I I would like to get a better understanding of um how many of them are reserved in the after-school and Saturday morning hours uh for. For outside students to come in or, you know, even adult soccer leagues to come in. Rather than having um our our local kids be able to play on a field after school. Um, so I will stop there. I feel like I'm sort of beating a dead horse with this question, but I would like to maybe. Uh, put in a request for this information to be provided um at some point uh soon. You, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Morales. Those are really good questions. There there are a couple of fields in. District seven that have um similar relationships with uh with local colleges and um. Private institutions, so I would be interested in an analysis like that as well, so I'm happy to work with you and in requesting that from Parks and. From central staff. Um, so are are there any uh additional questions from? Council colleagues? Councilmember Herbald.
Thank you. Um, it's pretty much in the same line of questioning, but just um wanting to get. Baseline understanding of this public benefit agreement. Is this just a continuation of the current levels of public service under the current? Um, uh, Seattle Prep SPR agreement, or is this a change from that agreement?
So, Chris, you want to?
Yeah, so this would be a complete new addition, so the current agreement does not include a public benefit piece. Um, it just involves the field and the priority rights for Seattle Prep, so this entire. Public benefits piece now is in addition to the agreement as we're extending it, something that we're looking to get more for the community.
Very helpful. Thank you. Um, wanna just echo my interest on um. Sort of the the value per hour um associated uh with this, the public benefit analysis. Um, and the the decision that the minimum of fifty public service hours uh annually is. Is an adequate public benefit. Interested to to learn more about um. How you conclude uh that number, so appreciate that.
My understanding is that this public benefit requirement is um identical or nearly identical to what is required of Seattle Academy that is doing the turf. Uh, uh, installation at South Park. Um, yeah, Christopher, uh, let me, that's wrong, but I think that's what we used as the model.
That's absolutely right, Tracy. Uh, in fact, these are not necessarily cookie cutter. Agreements. Uh, I think what is unique about the South Park Agreement. Is ninety percent of the hours are being reserved for community use, so we really try to look at. The needs of uh the individual communities and think about um what works best in the public benefit regard for. Communities, but that said, we would be happy to uh go back and provide you with the information you requested.
Thank you. Um, and I I do want to just underscore, I think this is significantly different than the South Park Facility because because of what. Um, you just highlighted Superintendent Williams, it's difference between a ninety percent community use and and um. Sixty percent community use, so it just seems like. There should be some. Some logic or some uh policy-based rationale or or again of value per dollar associated with the city investment.
Thank you. Are there any other uh questions from colleagues? So just to clarify, I um do want to clarify something from the presentation. Uh, Councilmember Herbald, I think, just touched on it. Um, thirty-eight percent of the available hours for the field. Um, would be for use of university prep under this agreement. Um, that component is consistent with what's been in place for the last ten years. The new addition is the public benefit, just to clarify. Is that right? Okay, so that there wouldn't be an additional that you could, can someone actually, for the record, maybe affirmatively answer that? I see head nodding.
Yes, we are not seeking any additional hours over what we have been previously using for the uh previous ten years of the agreement.
Right. Uh, thanks. I just wanted to um to confirm that and and put a finer um point on it. Uh. But otherwise, um, I don't think I have uh any other uh clarifying questions I want um. To raise at this time unless uh another um comment from. A colleague is is requested. I don't see anyone else uh looking to jump in. Uh, so colleagues, with that, uh, given the the presentation and um the question-answer period with the panel, I I would be inclined to to vote on this today. So I'm I'm gonna move the bill to put it in front of us and so I move Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-two. Is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded the bills in front of the committee. Are there any comments on the legislation before the committee? I'm seeing none. Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the role on recommending the passage of Council Bill one-two-zero-three-four-two to full council? Councilmember Herbald.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Same.
Uh, I'm I'm sorry, Councilmember Morales, could you repeat your vote?
I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Muscata.
Aye.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Chair, there are three in favor with one abstention.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, so the legislation passes and we'll go forward to full council for consideration, so. Uh, thank you very much, panel, and uh we will. Um, be in touch as this continues to work its way through the legislative department, so thank you so much for making yourselves available today. Uh, but uh Superintendent Williams, don't go anywhere. We're moving on to Agenda Item Three, which is gonna be another Parks Panel, so. Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you please read Agenda Item Three into the record?
Agenda Item Three, Seattle Park District Cycle One Overview, two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty.
Okay, so uh as uh we are now getting started in earnest, uh, this will be the year where. Um, the council in our capacity as the board of the Metropolitan Park District. Will be considering an additional cycle of investments um with the Metropolitan Park District. Uh, we are now, as I mentioned in my initial chair's report, convened as the Public Assets. And um Homelessness Committee, uh, but in that capacity, we'll be having um some briefings about some components of the Metropolitan Park District. Investments as relates to Seattle Parks and Recreation, which is under the purview of this committee. And for one of the first things we'll be looking at, uh, as we're early in this process still. Uh, is the Cycle One uh accomplishments from the Seattle Metropolitan Park District, which is a property tax levy-supported. Park District uh supplementary to the general fund that the Seattle uh Parks and Recreation receives. So, uh, we're really looking forward to diving into the slide deck here and this presentation from department officials as. Uh, an early part of our process. Uh, to dive into uh the potential of the Metropolitan Park District and what we might want to do in a second cycle. And with that context, I will hand it over to our panel, uh, which, um, again, we are joined by interim. Uh, Superintendent Christopher Williams, um, and I believe Michelle Finnegan. Yes, there's Michelle. Excellent. So, uh, Superintendent, I will hand it over to you uh to introduce the rest of your panel and. So Superintendent, I will hand it over to you to introduce the rest of your panel and and start the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. So it's myself and the extremely capable Michelle Finnegan. We'll walk through this today and she'll help fill questions here and I might take the lead on the presentation. So a lot of this information isn't going to be new to most of you. You've seen, heard some of this during presentations when you have your park district governing body hat on. But this is a report out on the Cycle One report. So when we say Cycle One, that refers to the end of the six-year cycle. The inter-local agreement required that we publish three reports, an annual report, a mid-cycle report, and an end-cycle report. And what we hope to capture here and highlight for you are accomplishments, lessons learned, things we thought, well, gee, we thought that was going to work out, but that didn't work out so well. So we want to provide that kind of transparency in this presentation. Next slide. We are in a unique reflective moment. Normally, when we would be doing a mid-cycle report, you would already be convening to adopt the next cycle. But because we had these pauses due to the pandemic, there's this unique reflective moment before you take up the actual second cycle park district work to be reflective on what we've learned. You know, we went through a period of strategic planning. We recently worked with the Board of Park and Recreation Commissioners to conclude roughly two to three months worth of work to make a set of recommendations to the department. We we submitted those recommendations to the mayor's office and that two-year pause really allowed us to complete the end-cycle report and to better inform some of the recommendations that have gone into, I think, the park district work. So we just want to highlight here that this is a unique moment in time. Next slide. Okay, so today we'll provide a brief overview and context of the Cycle One Park District Report. Lessons learned, of course. Let's see here. Next slide. When we, so there were a couple of choi- a couple of choices at the beginning. You know, were we going to do a levy? Or were we going to do a park district? And historically, the Park Department has done levies where we've gone to the voters every six to eight years and asked for funding for new shiny things. What is different about the Park District ballot measure is that it was designed to supplement the basic operating efficiency of the department. It was designed to extend the life of our assets to meet public expectations for the amount of available hours at our community centers and park maintenance. It was also designed to insulate the organization from ebbs and flows in the general fund. One of our goals is to bolster partnerships and to leverage these dollars while saving taxpayers' money. Next slide. Okay, so ultimately, the committee, when they were looking at the idea of a park district versus a levy, that they ultimately decided on a park district for lots of reasons. And this was supported by the mayor and the council. And there were a lot of concerns raised by a park district model. Some people viewed it as writing the city a blank check. And therefore, we established an inter-local agreement with several key provisions. And those provisions include sort of the provision that the city council would serve as the governing body for the park district, that we would engage in a six-year planning cycle to be consistent with the State Growth Management Act for comprehensive planning, that we would establish a community advisory board. And we recently consolidated that into the Board of Park and Recreation Commissioners and that we would establish a general fund commitment floor to the department. And basically, what the community was saying is, hey, if we support this, we don't want the city to shrink from its general fund obligation to support the Park Department. So that's where the general fund commitment came in. And then once again, it required some regular accountability reporting with an annual annual report, a mid-cycle report, and an end-of-cycle report. Next slide. So basically, what we want to highlight here is that for the first six years, more than two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars was invested across the system. The plan adopted assumed sixty percent of this would be capital investments. There was, there were some funding changes over the cycle. However, a majority of the funds supported capital investments such as major maintenance and asset management work. Next slide. Okay, in this slide, this is a before-and-after picture of the pool renovation. I think that is Medgar Evers Pool. And the idea here is that pool renovations are really expensive to do, right? And maybe without the park district, you know, it's sort of, who knows when we would have gotten to a project of this magnitude? At the time we adopted the park district proposal, or rather, plan, a snapshot of our deferred capital maintenance was more than two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars annually. So no question that number has grown. But the park district has provided us some capacity to do big projects like this. We did, we made a commitment to do one-hundred-and-twenty major maintenance projects. We actually completed one-hundred-and-twenty-three. We identified six community centers that needed structural upgrades just to make them durable into the future. These weren't major renovations. They were more or less sustainability projects to keep the doors open. We also continued to invest in the zoo and the aquarium. Even though these are operated by nonprofits, they are still park-owned facilities. We completed improvement projects at twenty-one P patches and eight dog-off-leash areas. Next slide.
Superintendent, can we actually pause for just a moment on this slide? Please, I have a couple clarifying questions and and if if colleagues do, I'm happy to maybe open it up a little here as well. Do you know off the top of your head the the six community centers that receive structural and system upgrades?
Yeah, so those were Lake City, Green Lake, South Park, Jefferson, Queen Anne, and Hiawatha. And these were basically stabilization projects that added more useful life to the building and did some major repairs.
Great, and on the off-leash areas, this is something that I certainly hear a lot in my district about off-leash areas and the popularity of of parks off-leash areas. Were any new off-leash areas funded? It says here that eight were improved. But did we get any expansion of off-leash areas in the Cycle One for the park district?
I believe we did. Unfortunately, I can't recall them right off the top. You know, so this was not only eight off-leash area improvements and some mix of new off-leash areas. I know we have one in Georgetown that we're still working on. That one comes to mind. We also developed an off-leash comprehensive plan or strategic plan with the citizens for off-leash areas. So a lot of work has gone into this with the local stewardship group that stewards our off-leash area parks.
Great, thank you. Do council colleagues have any questions on this slide before we continue? Okay, I don't see any additional ones. I'll go ahead, Superintendent. Thank you for for pausing there.
Sure. Why don't we get to the next slide? Okay, so additional first-cycle accomplishments. Our community centers are open and available to the public during the day. And it is really difficult to do things like finish gymnasium floors with the fumes and paint thinners and that sort of thing. So we created a third shift overnight crew to do a lot of the work that is just not appropriate to do while the public is in the building. We also funded more support with our partners and animal control. You know, so ironically, while there is a lot of support for off-leash areas, there, you know, one of our number-one complaints, I believe it or not, is off-leash area dogs in our parks. So we partnered with Animal Control to develop a program to enhance enforcement in our public parks to ensure the public is leashing their dogs and obeying obeying scoop laws. We issued sixteen-hundred-and-fifty citations and three-hundred verbal warnings over this period of time.
Superintendent, just to clarify, you you just said complaints about off-leash areas. Did you mean complaints about dogs being off-leash in that? I just want to clarify. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you for that clarification. No, I was saying ironically, we just talked about off-leash areas and those are great. However, one of the complaints we get are dogs off-leash in developed parks. And because of that, we developed a program working with Animal Control to make sure we have enhanced enforcement. We want to encourage people to follow the dog leash rules and or to use the dog-off-leash park. So I went on to say that we issued sixteen-hundred-and-fifty citations and three-hundred verbal warnings were issued during this period of time. Other accomplishments here is we also developed a program to enhance restroom cleaning across the system. We expanded the cleaning at forty-one comfort stations is what we refer to them as in our public parks. And we are supporting the reforestation and maintenance of our green belts and natural areas. We're doing a lot of work with the Office of Sustainability on trees. And I think what you're going to see when the Park District proposal comes to you is an investment in more trees in our urban area.
Superintendent, just to pause a little on this slide too. Do we know how many? I mean, I see the volunteer hours for the forest restoration and maintenance. Do we know how many trees were planted as part of these efforts in Cycle One? That would be a good statistic, I think, to share with folks.
You know, we can certainly go back and get that metric. I bet Michelle could pull it out as we go through this presentation.
It's not specifically trees, but native plants. They plant the, through the GSP, we planted over six-hundred-thousand native plants in our in our forested areas.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely. All right, why don't we get to the next slide? Another emphasis for Park District Resources was on improving access to recreation services and our attempt to reach people in communities that have been historically underserved. So we have a big focus in this organization on race and social justice, equity, and access. So we made investments in new public open space across the system. Let's see, are we on the right slide? Are you on slide number nine? Yep, yep, you're on slide number nine. Okay. We have more, we awarded more than seven million dollars in grants. We made improvements to fourteen land bank sites.
I must be on a different slide than you.
Why than me?
So I think this one was, I think you started at increased access for recreation programming, including we added a new recreation scholarship fund.
Oh.
And then, yeah, we have three new granting programs that support community bringing art into our parks and doing programming that further gets people moving in a healthy way, especially those that are most at risk of of health-related disparity. And then a Recreation for All program that brings community organizations into our facilities to bring more diverse programming. So we've served over five-hundred-thousand, or sorry, fifty-thousand participants in that endeavor this cycle. And I think you are on this one.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Good, good save and good catch. I jumped ahead of myself here. So again, we made investments in new public open space. We purchased eighteen properties, totally more than nine acres. We have awarded more than seven million dollars in grants for community-based projects through the Major Project Challenge Fund. Five of the fourteen land bank sites were developed. And, you know, a lot of this work is the kind of work that has a lot of community engagement as a component to it. So we just talked to a lot of the community when they came to us with grant proposals and the Park Board was heavily engaged engaged in that work, as was the Park District Oversight Committee. And then certainly, the park development projects had huge huge community engagement components to them. Next slide. Okay, so on this slide, you know, continuing with accomplishments, the first five-year cycle went more or less as planned. In twenty twenty, as you know, what the world changed and we were dealing with a global pandemic due to COVID. The park district funding allowed us the flexibility to respond to this major unprecedented emergency. We pivoted our mission to essential functions and staff became essential workers. During twenty twenty, more than two-hundred, more than two-hundred-and-fifty people were provided shelter at three community center locations across the system. Almost a thousand youth were served an all-day COVID-compliant childcare program. Our staff acted as social distancing ambassadors at busy parks across the system. And I'll just say a little bit about that. You know, the Social Distance Ambassador Program was piloted right here in the Seattle Park and Recreation Department. But that model would become a national model across the United States for helping the public enjoy public parks in a safe way during the pandemic. We worked hard to keep our elders and people with disabilities engaged in our programs through the offering of virtual programs across the system. Next slide. More lessons learned here. You know, we've been engaged in a process of continuous performance and improvement with regard to the park district. Some of the observations or lessons learned we have is that the decision to create the park district has proven to be the right decision from our perspective. It's helped build critical resiliency in the department and has helped insulate the department operations from unanticipated swings in the general fund budget. The stability and flexibility of the park district resources has allowed us to creatively reprogram resources to mitigate general fund and park fund shortfalls through multiple budget cycles and mostly, and most recently, during the period of unprecedented uncertainty due to COVID-nineteen. Our twenty-twenty pivot pandemic response is perhaps the best example of the role these resources played. You know, because the park district resources are fungible, meaning that we don't make a distinction between capital funding and operations, it's worth noting that the park district was able to step in and help relieve some pressure on the general fund. Next slide, please. So what this slide is attempting to con- So what this slide is attempting to convey is that uh on the operating side, uh let's take that top line, activation, get moving, recreation for all uh arts and parks, those are various grants and uh the Park District funds about thirty percent of that, oh, excuse me, of that overall effort. Uh let's take another one. Um let's use golf, for example. There are no Park District dollars that go into the golf program. It's an enterprise fund and it is uh operates on a self-recovering model. Under Recreation Facility Operations, about eighteen percent of the uh Park District rev- Park District revenues are supporting our community center hours and community access. Under uh capital um acquisition, uh Park District revenues were providing fifty percent of our acquisition dollars and we've, we're actually going to zero that out uh in this next cycle because King County just adopted a measure and the CFP funding where they will provide one hundred percent of the funding for uh properties in uh low-income areas. And um so that was good news here recently. Uh also, um we don't have any current debt service, although we anticipate there will be some debt service in this next cycle of funding. And then, of course, our Urban Forestry Program, uh the Park District is providing forty-two percent of the funding. So this gets into kind of an interesting conversation because as we're talking about the Park District, you see that nineteen percent there at the bottom. Uh one would believe that the Park District was responsible for a greater overall percentage of our two hundred and eighty-eight million dollar budget, when in fact uh the Park District makes up about nineteen percent, a significant nineteen percent of our budget. Next slide. Okay, so some of the lessons learned is uh uh we thought we should uh maybe redo or reestablish the Board of Park and Recreation Commissioners to advise and provide oversight on the Park District. Uh we made that change this year. And what drove us to make that change is we have people who serve on the Park Board and they have a scope of decision-making that didn't include advising the department on the Park District because there was a separate citizen oversight committee and it seemed kind of silly to have these two advisory groups not be able to talk to each other about some fairly important issues concerning the department. So uh we brought to you some legislation that changed how the uh Park Board is organized. Uh the other thing that we've done is really had a focus on centering equity uh and amending the uh inter-local agreement to reference a a community response fund versus a major project challenge fund. Uh this was a big capital project challenge fund where you could receive up to one point eight million dollars in funding match when most communities probably can't raise that level of funding. So we wanted to do something uh make a change that recognized uh, you know, a more equitable access to uh grants in the system. Also, uh we amended the reporting timelines to better reflect the planning. So um there were examples in the inter-local agreement where uh uh we needed to be delivering recommendations to you uh before we had actually presented our end-cycle report or presented an annual report and we wanted to sort of true up those expectations. Next slide.
Superintendent, Councilmember Herbold has a question.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much. Um on the lessons learned, um the uh narrative says that you've uh renamed the major projects challenge fund to a community response fund, but I'm sure it's more than just a name change. Was wondering if you can actually explain what the difference is.
Sure. So the uh major challenge project fund was uh basically designed to recognize that we had some really big facilities like the uh Green Lake Rowing and Sailing Center project. You know, was a several million dollar project uh that the Advisory Council had been working on for years. Not everybody across Seattle has a neighborhood project that big and that size. It had some pretty clear parameters on your access to be able to apply for a grant for that funding. I think the minimum threshold was a one point two million dollar level of application fee just to apply for it all the way up to one point eight million dollars. That left out a lot of community initiative and a lot of neighborhoods and communities that might have just wanted to do a play area project. So the big change is, is uh we've taken that funding and created this uh sort of equity-centered community uh grant opportunity that will give communities all over the city an opportunity to apply for grants. And the other good news is this won't, this will not require a match.
So no match is required and you've lowered the minimum threshold from one point two to just no minimum threshold or?
No minimum threshold up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Michelle, were you trying to get in there? Okay, okay. Next slide. Okay, so another aspect of the Park District being so integral to our programs and services is talking only about one fund. So one of the things that's hard for us is uh just by way of example, we were on the phone here a few days ago uh with the school district and uh you know, there was discussion about coming down to the school district, or rather, coming down to the Park District building, right? And the reality is, is we want to be able to talk about the Park District in the context of the overall mission for the department, the overall services we provide, the overall work we do with the community. Uh we recognize that it is important to be accountable for the Park District dollars, but we would like to uh uh I think change uh our narrative and how we have the discussion with the community uh since uh twenty percent of the department's budget uh is made up of Park District resources. So uh we're not stepping away from the overall accountability, but we'd like to step into uh a more comprehensive discussion about uh the goals, the uh mission, uh the planning uh and the resources for the organization uh in a more comprehensive way. And that's, that's one of the big lessons learned and one of the takeaways we have in our discussion about the Park District. Next slide.
Uh Superintendent, can we go back to the, to slide fifteen for just a moment, please? Thank you. Um you know, I I uh have a a strong preference for continuing, at least at some level, to track at the initiative level
Yeah.
the metropolitan Park District items. Um I don't have an issue with that data also being, or that information also being accessible or visible in an operating lines of business format. Um but I I would have a hard time transitioning completely to from a uh a Park, Park District initiatives to operating lines of business. I'm happy to continue to talk about it, but um I I'm, I it, I just find it easier to track and do this work with the Park District initiatives items. Um it's just a personal preference. I don't know if council colleagues want to weigh on, weigh in on this chart as well, uh or if if um if central staff also has clarifying questions at this time, but this is one that that I wanted to flag in the side deck for some future discussion about um how we can accommodate some of the interests that Parks is flagging, but um but also not lose track of the um the the detail of having Park District initiative level um line items. I don't see anyone else wanting to comment on this slide, so I just want, oh, Councilmember Herbold.
Sure, I mean, I just um, I I I probably would need to spend a little bit more time with this slide, but I I agree with you, um Chair Lewis, that the objective should be to communicate with the public what their Park District dollars are buying and make accountability and transparency uh easier. And um it seems to me, being more specific um on the lines of business uh for the Park District initiatives, that that actually enhances communication, accountability and transparency. I'm not opposed to um to a shift to a different approach. I'm just, I don't want to lose sight of what um sort of the overall policy goals are for um the the use of the lines of business.
We hear you on maintaining the transparency and the uh uh I think reporting and visibility of the initiatives in the budget. Okay.
All right, I think we can go to the next slide. Thank you, thank you.
You bet. So this slide uh is attempting to, so I'll ta- I'll tell a story here, you know, um there was, there was once upon a time, if you would ask Seattle Parks and Recreation for any performance management data, you know, you would have got goose egg, right? Or it would have been really difficult for us to uh uh provide you that information because we didn't have the system set up. We didn't have the technical tools readily available to us. Uh we didn't have uh a data-informed decision-making process in the department. And uh what this dashboard really shows is that we count everything, right? I mean, you know, uh there were some questions today about metrics. While I don't have those on the top of my head, we have this website available on our uh on our website. And um uh we have lots of operating budget data related to the Park District uh on our data dashboard. Uh that is available to, anyone can go on and look at that. Uh uh it is up to date. Uh we talk about uh dashboard reporting and data management uh almost religiously in this organization. So I think one of the big learning uh and growth opportunities for the department related to the Park District has been this immersive, uh I think, commitment to uh data gathering, collection, curating data and reporting it out. Next slide. So more on the continuous learning, and I know Tracy will remember this, we were required to uh uh look at three lines of business uh over the course of the six-year cycle. Uh there was a park maintenance uh report, there was a recreation division report, and there was a planning and development division report. And uh we looked at uh how to improve the operations in these three specific areas. Under our park maintenance program, uh we established a comprehensive uh asset management program. Uh we even have piloted a stage gating program, uh conducted routine condition assessments across the system. Uh under our community center or recreation division program, uh we have done a lot of work to ensure the Seattle Park and Recreation, Associated Recreation Council relationship is functioning as intended. Uh we want to uh uh we've worked hard to increase data collection and strengthen performance measures in the operations of our community centers. We use uh public dollars in low-income neighborhoods uh where we expect more revenue from higher-income neighborhoods. So uh continuing to double down on that. And then in our planning development division, we had a significant level of underspend uh in that division, underspending capital. And uh we made some significant uh changes structurally and organizationally. Um some of it was staffing and staffing capacity changes. Some of it was integrating a stage gate process for capital projects. And then really upgrading our technology and workflow systems was a part of that work. Next slide. So if you're interested in uh more Cycle One report updates, uh you can see those various colored dots represent projects across the system. Uh you, we were able to leverage twenty-five partnerships in underserved communities. In the mid-cycle progress, uh we treated two thousand and fifteen like a ramp-up year. Implemented uh programs in twenty sixteen and seventeen. We provided sixty-two grants to community groups.
And Christopher, that's just an example of the level of detail that if you get into those reports, you'll find that for each of the Cycle One initiatives. So just an example there.
Yeah.
Enticing people to dive in deeper with this.
Into the data. Okay, and and then the next slide is just a Q and A slide, if you have questions for Michelle or myself.
Well, Superintendent, thank you so much uh for this presentation on the first cycle uh and sharing those additional resources in the dashboard and and everything else that um I've availed myself of, and I'm sure council colleagues have as well. Um are there any questions now that we're through? Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Um I'm just reviewing the central staff memo um dated uh June tenth. And I'm trying to orient myself uh on sort of where we are in the planning process and um pending recommendations. There are um a couple of uh attachments at the end. And I see attachment one, of course, are the uh Cycle One initiatives funded in the adopted budget. But attachment two um is proposed pre-commitment projects. And I'm, I'm assuming that are, these are pro- proposed by uh Parks and Recreation to the board. And then attachment three um is uh Parks District Cycle One Initiative Proposed for Inclusion Cycle Two Plan in twenty twenty-three proposed budget. Can you just give me a little bit more of an understanding of where we are in the process? These are, these are proposals that Parks have made to the board and the board has or hasn't taken action yet.
The Board of Parks and Recreation um Commission did take action on those recommendations, both on, primarily on um the and you will hear about this on next Friday, um uh on a new set of investment opportunities, about thirty million dollars of new investment opportunities. Uh an affirmation of those pre-commitment projects, and we'll go into further conversation about that next week as well. And then I also think they gave a nod to or affirmed that uh what SPR was recommending is recommending, which is that the um all of the initiatives that were funded in Cycle One would in fact be carried forward into Cycle Two. So that list that we just saw uh on one of the slides back here, that listed all of those um initiatives, they would be recommending that those initiatives all be carried forward, I think except for two of them that actually in the end get picked up as new, new proposals in the Cycle Two um recommendations from the Board of Parks and Rec. So we will be um having further conversation uh about all of this, including in particular the part that you have not yet seen, though I have sent a couple of follow-up emails that would give you more detail on these uh thirty-eight new investment opportunities that the Board of Rec uh Parks and Rec Commission uh adopted at their May nineteenth meeting.
And so what's happening on next Friday? Are they presenting their recommendations?
They will be, I think the, the co-chairs will be there to give some opening uh remarks. Um I, they are not going to go through every one of their recommendations. Um Eric McConaughey and I will walk the council members through um those uh uh on the twenty-fourth.
Got it. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, uh thank you for those questions. And and for those viewing at home, that was an exchange about um the, the early part of our process on recommendations for Cycle Two. Just to, to foreshadow a little bit, which is great. Actually, related to that, Superintendent Williams, I don't know if this question is too premature, but does the department at this time anticipate carrying over all of those line items from the previous cycle, or are there places where the department anticipates consolidations and reapportionments in, in some of the initial recommendations you guys will send down? If that is too premature now, feel free to tell me. We're going to be talking about this a lot this summer. So.
I mean, I can say high level. You know, I think the way we talk about what we consider pre-commitments internally is that funding, at least to us, recognizes that for the first ten years between, you know, the year two thousand and, well, I guess fourteen years in two thousand fourteen, that we had taken significant levels of budget cuts and reductions to the department and our ability to operate staff, community centers, maintain our parks, do our facility maintenance. And we have thought about that baseline as a way of backfilling, you know, sort of ensuring that we continue to backfill those reductions going forward. So a lot of the funding on the operating side would mean that, for example, in community centers, you might reduce hours at community centers, for example, right? Or have some other unintended consequence across the system. That's how we got to kind of a conclusion that we felt like what's included in that description of baseline was really just bolstering the department's operations from years of prior budget reductions.
Okay, that's good context. Are there any other council questions? Okay, I don't see any. Well, panel, thank you so much for being here to share that Cycle One report with the committee. It's a good way to kind of kick off this work, to have a good overview of how the first, you know, six-year-plus cycle has gone and, and what some of that work is and how that sets the foundation for, for moving forward with our work this summer and fall on building a plan for a cycle two. And looking forward to a lot more of these discussions as we queue up that work. So with that, I think we're good on this item of business, which was our last item of business. I do want to do one last shout-out while you guys are here. Superintendent Williams, I appreciate the Parks Department sending along to my office, and I discussed this at council briefing, the large amount of summer job opportunities that Seattle Parks and Recreation has, particularly for, you know, for lifeguarding, but also staffing our community centers, staffing waiting pools, recreation counselor opportunities. Great jobs, especially for young people in the city who are looking for an opportunity this summer to make some money and get outside and have a job of responsibility and good experience. And I am going to be sending out a newsletter to my subscriber list. You know, doing an all-call for people to sign up for those jobs. Did just want to make that plug also in public session for folks who may be listening or, or invested in our Seattle Parks and the Metropolitan Park District and everything else. You know, that work is made possible by the folks who do these important jobs in Seattle Parks and Recreation, and there's a lot of opportunities to join that family. And strongly encourage folks to reach out to Parks and Rec to apply for those jobs so we can enjoy those great public assets this summer. With that, is there any other business to come before the committee before we adjourn? No one is looking to keep us here. Great. So with that, it is three thirty-eight PM and the meeting of the Public Assets and Homelessness Committee is hereby adjourned.
Thank you.